Yeah, it's all straight up and down.
Yeah, you can't get anywhere. You can't go anywhere in those weird little big trees they put up on top of the cell phone towers.
Oh, yeah, they make them look, they don't they look worse. They look like redwoods.
That's when I grew up, I want to be a weather guesser and.
Do you want to help? Understand that accuracy and a weather predictors career is not a.
It's time.
It's time.
I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you.
Same crew.
SSD is important.
It's gonna be a quick meeting, isn't it?
You'll be the deciding factor.
I haven't had dinner yet, so.
And uh next on is the minutes of the first meeting.
I make a motion we accept the minutes.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, the motion by Cat, second by Chris who accept the minutes as granted. All those in favor? When I read Garcia's minutes, I realized I got something wrong. No. Whatever for the.
Facebook. You're in big trouble.
Yeah, retract it.
Yeah.
Facebook retraction. Still out there though.
That's not right after someone.
Have you?
That's a good question.
Oh, it's still up there.
Okay, yeah, you can, yeah, we'll get it back.
You didn't want to stand up and worry.
She said that she would be like.
Alright, so fire department, we've been, as an hour and a half ago, we were relatively quiet. It's a crash on two oh two and the traffic control. That's hour and a half. Let me tell you, there's a lot of people that like to drive fast, they're impatient, and it gets to nowhere. We almost got tagged five, five times, right? All by the.
You mean there's people that drive like this?
No, no, there's people that are patient. In fact, one example is I was in traffic back all the way up past Main Street. So you get over the hill by Halls, it's dangerous. So trying to get that line of traffic moving, I'm in the center lane. Some guy comes out on North Main Street and he had to wait, you know, maybe two minutes while I'm trying to let this line, well, he wouldn't wait any longer. We're sending him down in a Vess. He comes flying right by me. I felt the breeze from his vehicle. I probably yelled a few words I shouldn't have, but he continued on and he pulls into Wilson's. You know, like come on, you just couldn't wait, you know, another thirty seconds. But anyway, there's no officers around, otherwise I would have had him arrested.
Yeah.
Almost killing me. Anyway, I missed the last meeting, but in the last four weeks, the two most notable was the fatal crash on two oh two. We responded to simultaneously with a structured fire and went for, ended up going back to Puerto Rico and that evening. And it ended up being a fully involved structure fire. We were out three and a half hours that night. So it was a long, long day. We ended up with four calls in that one day. But since then, it's been relatively quiet up until today. Halloween was great. We had six hundred and twenty-six trick or treaters come through our doors at the station. Big heavy. Sure you saw my pictures in my weekly mat home. The past week, we did the ride to school with children. Ended up with twelve kids, had a blast, big hit for the parents and the kiddos. Trip to Arizona went well. Thanks again for allowing us to go down there. Three of us went down and learned a lot about cancer prevention and health and wellness in the fire service. I'm gonna be working to put together a wellness program for the town of Monmouth Fire Department and be voluntary, of course, but I'm not trying to try to do something a little better to get us a little healthier. And shape the rescue, whatever. Well, you could all use a little shape in our lives. Junior firefighters did well down Scarborough. They competed against seventy-five kids. We had like four out of five categories they placed in the top three. They just blew me away. And they only been practicing for a month. I'd never done a monster before. And they, they did really well. They put Monmouth on the map, so looking forward to next year. This past Sunday, four of us went down to Splitwood through some axes and we raised money for the families of the Lewiston shooting. We spoke the firefighter competition with several fire departments. They had, at the end, they had four signed up. They were the only fire department that showed. So the team that the ownership had a team together, split up, four of us, and we teamed up, four teams of two, and we had a friendly competition. There was a sponsor there and so with our entry fee and food sales and they're kicking in the money, we raised three hundred bucks, so.
Raised how much?
Three hundred.
Three hundred?
Yep. It's in the notes there, page two.
Oh, yeah.
Free lighting is gonna be happening. Fire Department will be helping out at the museum on November twenty-fifth, Saturday from four to five. I guess the tree's being delivered this week or early next week or something. A big tall tree that's gonna be temporarily put in place and lit up. But we'll have a few firefighters in the museum that end up hot cocoa, sample the cookies. Our next fire department event's gonna be the Santa breakfast in Paul Road. We do that annually. That's gonna be Saturday, December second, seven to ten. I don't have it here in the notes, Doug, but also that day is. Way drive up at the Dollar General that we help send a truck up there and we stand outside in the cold tent too and collect gifts. Boys patrons. And then also that day at three thirty, I believe, is the holiday parade in Winthrop. So we sent in a truck as well. Pretty full day. I did set up a meeting with I F O. I sent Mark an email as well. Guess they just forgot about us, so I had a reminder. Sent him a particular email. He immediately responded. He's gonna be in Brunswick. December sixth, so I got that afternoon scheduled to meet with the rep that's gonna be doing a, basically, and I had the review of our town. And a lot of records, it's three, four hours of record generation. Get him everything he needs. I don't know when we'll actually do the test. But that's the first part is we gotta meet and give him records on that fire apparatus, manpower, communications, dispatch, all kinds of stuff. At the last week's business meeting, we had two new members join. One was my son, Kory. We joined the fire department. Pretty cool. So we're up to forty-two members. Which is far below our fifty member average over the last decade, so we're still down a bit. You know, we had thirty, I think we had thirty-one members at last week's business meeting, which fills our business room. And then some, you know, we're just overcrowded. That's a whole other story about meeting in the station. But even with a roster of forty-two people, we had six people turn out tonight with tonight's call, which is, I don't know, you know, daytime call probably, you know, I forget people who respond. The structure fire in Winthrop the other night, we literally had one free person, S C B A qualified crew, and they worked all three and a half hours without any manpower to swap through. Winter pad, low numbers. I think Manchester was there. They had low numbers. I think we had like two or three interior crews all together and they were busy just on the structure fire. So we're gonna start, you'll start seeing us at our public events, putting out applications, maybe signage, trying to promote, get a few more people to join the fire department. That's all I got. Unless you guys have any questions.
Do you notice it? Lower numbers during hunting season because guys are in the woods or.
I was in the woods on this call.
But still, you know, or they're on.
Before legal time ended, it couldn't be any more.
Yeah.
I wasn't seeing anything, so I walked out and got in my truck and went to the car. So actually, I got on scene at the same time as our.
What intersection was this accident at?
It was, it was in Winthrop on two oh two by church.
Victory to have this. Yeah.
Oh, right on the street.
That response that was there.
Couple, couple injured.
Diver. I was at an intersection of Main Street and two oh two where they have that, you know, funky turn.
There was an accident there.
I was a witness to it. I had to give all my.
Oh, you were? Yeah.
Dude, I hope that car doesn't, I hope that car stops because it's coming right at me. Yeah. Bizarre. I, I hear you. People are, I don't know, maybe it's a change in daylight savings and that kind of stuff. People are feeling like they're alright. Sure.
Greg won the axe.
Yeah, so he's gonna, he's gonna have it, uh, it's gonna get like a plaque and we're gonna mount it at the station.
You throw the axe?
Yeah. You know what? It does one turn. Does one three hundred and sixty degree turn if you do it right. So I had, I had a pro on my team. This guy literally goes up like this and it's just like that. It goes one complete turn and bullseye. Every single shot, he hit a bullseye. I still lost. But yeah, that was really a lot of fun. Of team building and good camaraderie. For a good cause.
Thank you.
Yeah. Just the election went well last week. The auditors were in last week as well. We think we got everything we need to them. They went away. We'll see when they come back if we're missing anything or not. If they need any more information from us. We're done with the interviews. For the deputy tax collector position, we have somebody that we've offered it to. I'll let you know next time because I don't think we've told the unselected yet. So just in case we're. Pleased with that person. They don't have a, a ton of experience, but they are well-known and very personable. We're hopeful that we can get them trained up and they'll be a good personality for the, for everybody to get along.
Local person?
Yes. Winthrop actually, but people around here should know who she is when they meet her. Yep, or May, let's put it that way. You'll know who she is. All I have, unless there's any questions.
In your note, you mentioned the election person. It said Jessica? Is it, did you mean Jessica?
No, that's her name. Yes, that's for the Y. Yep. She'll answer to both because a lot of people call her Jessica, but she, yeah, it is, it is for the Y. Yep.
Any other, any slide board reports?
The only thing I wanted to say was congratulations to the Monmouth Academy Boys Soccer Team's state championship for Class D. And so that group of kids is having a really good run, so some good athletes and. That's exciting.
And some of them were baseball players.
Oh, yes. Yeah, for sure. Because, you know, it's only so many kids to go around, so. You know, that they've had. Exactly, exactly. Hopefully Wade benefits from those same athletes, so. Sure.
I had an inquiry about the sidewalks on Main Street when that project was gonna take place.
Yeah, we haven't heard back from D O T. At this point, I'm thinking we're probably looking at either sometime twenty-five would be my guess is the earliest. We haven't seen, D O T hasn't re-engaged us with any of the preliminary designs. I have heard from Rob Prue from Pine Tree Engineering. Who did say that it looks like D O T when they scoped it. They think they have less work to do than they thought. So I don't know what that means for us or the, or how far are they gonna go in each direction, but I guess the storm drainage issues are less severe than they anticipated.
Is, is that a state project or does the town have to fund a portion of that or?
On Main Street?
Yes.
So this, the storm drains and the street itself are a state project. We would do what they call a village partnership agreement, which we have kind of indicated that we're going to do. And we would be responsible for sidewalks, pedestrian improvements, things like that. If we wanted to change lighting, all that kind of accessory kind of stuff, that would be town's expense. The town has been putting money away in the TIF account to kind of make that debt service should you choose to go.
Does the state do the work and we pay them or is that something?
No, what they will generally do is they will get in with their project. Our scope will be in there, but our work is our cost. They, they throw a certain amount of money, add improvements if you're willing to do the ADA type work. They like to see that. So there's some amount of funds that they'll contribute to those types of projects. You just have to meet their standards for that, which means they have to be A D compliant, you know, the funky.
Yeah.
Things. Yeah, that type of stuff. You have to meet their requirements. The threshold isn't real bad to work the state. It's a lot easier than taking federal money for sure.
Anything, I mean, I think we thought the state was gonna get to this before twenty-five, but like everything has gone.
Yeah, it's not looking like it right now. I mean, I'd be surprised. They, it's this current budget that they actually had money allocated to do the engineering work. So state budgets are what, October? So I'm thinking they probably just got their money. So they'll probably do stuff now through next year. And then I'm thinking they'll come forward with, this is what we want to do. And that's when we would probably engage them, I would guess, would be sometime next year.
What will they be doing? The Wagon Bridge and the Culver or Bridge on Combs.
Yes, those are separate projects. That's, that's a different process than this here. They've already done their preliminary, those public meetings, I think, and. Participated in those meetings where they asked the public, they haven't come back yet with any potential changes or anything from that feedback yet. We haven't heard back from them. So that's kind of their next step is they would come back with, if they were gonna change anything or if they're gonna say, no, we can't accommodate those other changes. And then the project would kind of flow with them there. So we're still waiting for them to come back with their design.
I, I thought I'd read somewhere that the water district was gonna put a new line going up May Street from like the post office all the way up to the, to the. Coming down.
I have heard some talk about that. I know that the water district and the sewer district are both working because they understand that once the state digs up the street, they don't want to be digging holes immediately afterwards. So they're, they've been kind of asking me for a feel of when I think that this work's gonna happen because they're trying to build it into their work plan and their budget so that they can get their replacements done all down Main Street. So they don't have to dig it back up right after because that would be a real shame, right? Pick up a brand new sidewalk or something right after it's. It always happens when you're hoping to minimize it. Yeah. So they are aware of this project and I think they're all doing the best they can to try to work around it or get it done before they.
Last night's Combs Water Shed meeting here. The, some people who are from the Winthrop area on Annamaskook, they were concerned about condition of the dam there. And. As they immediately want, look to me and think, well, can you facilitate replacing or fixing our dam? Because it's hard to get boards out and do, put boards in and all that stuff.
You mean a jug stream?
Yeah, jug stream.
We had put money in the budget, as you recall, to do an assessment on both of them. We diverted all that money to the Croton Wogan Dam and we found that it was broken. So this next budget, you could put, you know. We diverted all that money to the Crooknohagen Dam, and we found that it was broken, so this next uh budget, you could put, you know. Uh, probably five thousand or something would be enough to get an engineer out there to take a look at it, to tell us, you know, whether it's. At risk, or whether it can be put off, or whatever we need to do, or whatever. It's on the list of things uh for you guys to review in your next budget, but we don't have any money to do anything right now, certainly. That dam took all the money.
Well, of course, we want to do something with the salt shed, and we want to do something with the, and and uh. It was something you mentioned about our new fire station.
When don't you fail, when don't you mention it?
Once every two weeks.
Yeah, so that was something I learned down in Arizona, it's about uh things that we're lacking, fire station. Want to be like hot showers, you know, so guys can decon when they have a new station, not structure fires. You have that sold an hour, they call it, you know, that to try to get the soot particulates off your skin, you know, so you don't get skin cancer. I'll take the stuff home with you, or you're back in your personal vehicle, whatever, um. It's, it's really, it's, it's a, it's a bad thing, you know, I having that and and just. You talked about gear and turnout gear, in fact, I did an interview this week with a woman writing a book about PFAS and and turnout gear. Replace all our turnout gear, be like two to three hundred thousand dollars on our budget. Hundred and seventy three thousand dollars, you know, I mean, it just doesn't make sense, you know, so we're not gonna do that, but certainly, over time, we may have to start. Replacing two, three sets of gear per year, or whatever, uh. Long story short, we have outgrown our firehouse, and I'm gonna bring this up to C I P point, because. I don't want to prolong this meeting, but um. Talked with other fire officials, it just doesn't make sense, our ten year plan, put a hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years, starting in two thousand twenty five. And ten, well, thirteen, whatever, twelve, thirteen years from now, that million dollars is not gonna get us a new station, you know, that might get us the study and and all the. You know, whatever, uh preliminary work, you know, to break ground. We're better off really taking a consideration of, you know, bonding or whatever for twenty years and get. Get a new station, because ours has fallen apart without growing it, just it's not fitting the needs of our firefighters. And we're gonna start thinking about the future, uh, so. It'll come up again in our C I P plan, uh, I'm gonna start pushing to do something different than just. I had proposed that way back. Kind of been kicking that can down the road, and I I don't think that's gonna be good, um. It'll be coming back around. So thank you for pointing that out.
We, have we heard from the planning board, uh, when there might be a hearing on. The old Frost Farm Development Plan, this is the building. There's one building up by Route one thirty five that's under construction, looks really nice. Um, but uh, all the neighbors in that neighborhood have received notices.
No application yet.
No application, alright, all the neighbors in that neighborhood have received notices from D E P that they're planning on doing. Okay, so anyway, I was.
The think there came up as a question, just like I did.
Yep.
You did, uh, they're thinking sometime the end of December.
Okay. Alright, I will pass the word to those.
Wilford's field going down to the lake?
Yeah, that's the one.
And the beach, that's one. I've heard that's.
The best sandy beach on Annabaskook.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Boy, you're gonna get it. Uh, I've heard that's like a million dollar house that they've. Reporting there, I mean, they're.
That's kind of what they're thinking is high end homes.
The 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 Frost.
Original house, Wilford's house.
Like a billion dollar house.
It's a very expensive house, yeah, they put a lot of money into it, they've made a big investment. Looks really good. And that happened.
Is it a single family residence, what is it?
It is.
That house is gorgeous inside though. Oh, well, I looked across the street, so I used to corral Wilford's bulls from time to time and. Things like that, and his goat that lived on the porch on a rope, you know, and the goat lived up on the porch and had a rope and. I I got to know Wilford pretty well, and um. I put out a fire in his field one time, because the hay um, the guy that was paying for him that lived down on. Wogan Road, the muffler sparked a windrow, and I was out there. In flip flops, stomping out a fire and all of that, but I went over one time. I think because one of the cows was out or something, and um. He only lived like in the L section that went out to the barn, he only lived there, but you know, you could walk around the porch, and I walked on the porch and. Talked to the goat and all that, and inside that main part of the house, I mean, the woodwork, it was just a classic, big old. Farmhouse with gorgeous woodwork in there, and obviously, it wasn't taken care of and kept up, but I mean, it was absolutely. You know, what you could do with that to bring it back, it was beautiful inside, so. Wilford was one in a million, but he. Was a good keeper.
Detective renovations. Beautiful, yeah.
Yeah. One night I had a knock on my door, this is a funny story, you know, this only happens in me, my coit goes, your cows are out, and I said, I don't have cows, I have horses. Well, the cows are out, and I said, but I don't have cows, I have horses, are my horses out? No, they're cows, and I said, well, those are Wilford's cows, he's across the street. I will never forget that, I said it like ten times, I don't have cows, horses. Let's go wake Wilford up, so. Alright, on that note, that's a funny story about Wilford in the neighborhood, so.
Are there any more stories?
Did you get all let down?
Was there anything else we were supposed to convey from the planning board meeting? Here. I can't either. Thinking there was something we were supposed to, I was supposed to relay.
Get you the fee schedule next meeting.
Yep.
And we approve the uh. The other bylaws.
What is the, what are, what are the current hours for the CEO right now?
He's ending them from ten or so, the one or two on Mondays, and then Wednesdays, he's in about ten and depending. You know, it could be noon, one, but his, his hours are by appointment on Wednesday, so it's kind of like whatever he has to do.
Um, did we, uh, we had a little confusion over the. Marijuana Facebook survey thing, did we get that figured out?
Uh, Reagan called you right, you said not get it, I took it back down, she told me to take it down, I told me to put it up, I put it up, she told me to take it down, I took it down, so it's, it's, it's down now.
It's, anyway, cool, thank you for that, and if anyone wants to fill out a paper survey, they are more than welcome to just go. And get a paper survey, we're not gonna tally anything up until next week, just.
The ones that were filled out of the election today, to enter, I think, to put them together, so.
It's still, anyone who feels strongly about it can still.
Go fill out a survey, you just gotta do it.
In person, and you only get one. It was.
Why didn't I? Why wasn't I offered it?
No, no, it was right inside the door on the desk, right on the other side of the wall.
Go to Town Hall, fill out a survey. They don't know who you are, you're gonna have to prove that you're a Monmouth.
I didn't, I I didn't see it either, when I came up the second time, not to vote, but to do something else, I filled it out then, so, because I didn't see it yet.
How many did we collect?
I'm really not sure, I don't know what the total was at the end, I didn't count them, I don't know. The people inside here can't. Can't offer a view, they have to be picked up or taken on your own, uh, otherwise, they would have had to been out there, and we didn't have anybody to man it, so there's nobody to really say. You can take this, you kind of had to see it, if you were gonna do it.
I saw it, I told her.
I I did one.
Any other stories from the select board? I want to uh pull the comment.
None on there.
Nobody. Oh, on to.
Oh, I got one story.
It was when, it was the time that Kristen and I in eighth grade made fun of spelling teachers.
Not to uh to consider an abatement request from uh, we're five, five four Main Street. You know that uh.
We have this.
I I mean, just as a. Just real quick, everybody, the house is assessed at two hundred and sixty six thousand, and it was recently purchased. A year and a half ago for three hundred and fifty, and they're asking for it to be assessed at. Something less than what we have it assessed at, so they're looking for about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar abatement. Over, but below what they just paid for it, two thousand twenty one, I mean, that's kind of a synopsis of. Uh, when she went there, she actually found the deck in a shed that wasn't on the card, so that's gonna get added on. Probably not in their best interest to call her over there and.
You sure about that?
I don't think you did.
Thought I got it, I thought you got it. In concurrence with our assessor, that we denied the abatement request first. Five five four Main Street.
I'll second that.
So uh, Kat has made a motion, and uh Chris has seconded it to deny the abatement for five five four Main Street. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh, next is to consider revisions. To the parking ordinance in preparation for the Main Street sidewalk project.
So mostly, this is more just to start a conversation, I don't, I don't, I don't really need you to act on this if you don't want tonight, but I just wanted you to know. That the way that um engineers are looking at it right now, is we don't have enough room. On the Comston side of Main Street to get those utility poles out of the sidewalk without purchasing easements from every person. Going all the way down, so the easiest way to make sidewalks ADA compatible is to pull them towards the street. To do that, we have to move the street westerly, so you're gonna lose the parking on the other side. But basically, you have parking on one side of Main Street, so whichever side you wanted it to be on is probably fine, but in order to make the. Sidewalks, at least preliminarily, there isn't enough room. To have the utility poles out of the sidewalk unless we change the parking to one side of the street, so this is. This is the way to do it, I was just giving you an example of how we would have to change the parking ordinance, if you can't, it's a, the town bulk, because it's an ordinance. So I just wanted to put that information out there, so you can start to think about it, obviously, we're not. In a place where you have to do anything with this, but I just thought maybe you could talk to residents or whatever, and get, or or get feedback on what, how you. Feel that would be received by people down there, how you wanted to go about that, whether you wanted to hold a public hearing on it and. Get impact or put it off for now, I mean, all these are options, but I just wanted to lay it in front of you, so it's on your mind as we move forward.
And I think mostly people park on the Comston side. So we'd be moving them to the other side, because essentially, very few people park on the other side of the street, man, I mean.
On the non-Comston side, yeah.
Yeah, because mainly people park on the Comston side, because they're going to something that comes to them, so.
And the sidewalk is there.
Yeah. Yeah. And just to refresh my memory, were we thinking about sidewalks on both sides of the street, right? Is that uh?
It's still all kind of out there, we just know that there isn't enough room, so depending on what you want to do, if we, if we want to keep them on both. Sides, then we're gonna have to uh shift things to a certain extent, if you wanted to. Not do that, and there's a possibility that you could make it fit if you just had a sidewalk on one side, but in order to make kind of. All of it fit, because the ADA sidewalks have to be a certain width, right, and then we have to have enough room for the parking, and then the, the street is a state. Road, so it has to be a certain width, we can't just narrow it down to make it all fit, so we just kind of have to think about how you all want that to be. Just kind of a realization, it's not all gonna fit there, unless we want to do some serious work and purchasing of. Of easements all the way down one side, to be able to back those utility poles into people's front yards, which, you know, they may not be popular.
They don't maintain a certain distance off the edge of the road for like utility poles?
They do to a certain extent, uh.
But in this case.
In a lot of places where there are uh sidewalks that were kind of retrofitted in there, at some point, you know, the utility poles were probably there first, and at some point, somebody put it in there. The, the uh right of way space is where the utility poles are, and then we just kind of. At some point, somebody just added the sidewalks into that right away, so there isn't enough. Room, right, if you were gonna plant it up today, you'd have a utility corridor, your sidewalk, your parking, your street, you know, it'd be a lot wider, but there just isn't enough. Space, the way it's currently laid out, at least the way that we, uh uh preliminarily, the way the engineer has seen it, doesn't believe there's enough room.
Is there enough space if we were to? Discontinue having parking spaces, one, one set, one side of parking spaces, because it seems to me like. Those parking spaces aren't terribly, I mean, it's not very often that they're used to capacity.
No.
Like maybe two or three times a year, you see every parking space full, but otherwise, it's a smattering. And i- if we did away with one side of parking spaces, would we have enough room for uh sidewalks on both sides?
That's sort of what I'm proposing here, would be to get rid of the parking on the, for the non-Comston side of the street all the way down, it would allow the street to. Shift westerly, so you would be able to have that room, so then the. The curb essentially on the Comston side would move towards the road, giving more room for the sidewalk, so that's kind of what. This envision's here, but I just wanted to throw it out, you know, whether that's the solution, or whether there's some other one that you would prefer. Are are all open for you to kind of decide, ultimately, it'll have to go to the voters, because it's an ordinance modification.
The utilities underground?
That I doubt is in the budget, uh, to be honest, it's a very expensive endeavor. Definitely need uh uh easements probably to do that. And it would uh uh most likely incredibly slow down anything you want to do out there, just getting uh utilities to remove. From one pole to a new one, it takes a long time.
Yeah, that's, that's. That's a showstopper.
Um, can we uh come up with a plan for having an ordinance revision in the June? Town meeting?
Uh, potentially, if you all kind of know what you want to do, and if we get um some indication from DOT. Uh, uh, that they're gonna be ready to go, I could engage the engineer to get a better idea, I just wanted to. Throw it out there, that you didn't think that we were gonna kind of be able to do everything within the space that we have, you know, and then have it dropped on you later.
Right, well, it seems to me like if we've. If we've, if we know that there's a decision coming, we might as well knock this one. Out while we've got the opportunity, so it doesn't, you know, doesn't become. Problem, a delay, an additional potential delay for the project, if we know that this is something that. We've got to consider.
If you wanted to, I could, I could ask um. The engineer to give us some preliminary idea, you know, some preliminary drawings of what the easements are and stuff, and we could fund that out of some of the money that you have in the TIF project right now. So we could move that forward, you're authorized to spend money out of those TIP accounts, I could bring you a proposal if you want me to move that. Forward, you know, which may actually get us sort of a rough sketch of where our right of way is, and we have a real better idea about what. Is possible, and I could move that forward despite DOT not being ready, I mean, we have an idea, I can do that, if that's something you're all interested in getting.
That would seem to me to be a lot of sense, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cause we don't want to get caught, or be in the logjam.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, DOT comes to us tomorrow and says, oh yeah, we're totally ready, how about you guys?
Chalk or DOT.
What is, what is Winthrop's Main Street, that they have overhead wires and stuff?
Uh, yes, I believe there are, I believe there are utility poles down there, what they did was they took the streetlights. Off the utility poles and they put them in the sidewalk, so it kind of looks nice, you, you know, they put in the black poles with the nicer lights, and some towns do that to avoid the. The long. Arches, you can also put, uh, prettier streetlights on utility poles, just depending how you want it to look, some downtowns do that, they put like a black. Pole with kind of a more antique-looking lamp on the utility pole that already exists, or you can have the whole pole kind of built into the sidewalk, it just. It's all cost, right, if you put the pole in the sidewalk, we have to run underground, uh, power to those. Uh, places where they come up in the sidewalk, uh, versus just attaching it to the pole that already has that. Uh, infrastructure there. Just kind of depends on what you want to stand for.
And we'd need to do this anyway, so if we're doing it now versus later, it's part of the process that we'd have to do, yeah, so.
On to. Consider a, a. Quest for a proposal for the, our real estate broker service.
So this is just kind of the, uh, first step, if you want to try to get this process moving again. If you want. If you want to go this route where we sort of pick a broker to be the one that we would work with over a period of time, other than that, it's gonna be kind of one-off, every time, we're gonna try to find somebody, uh, to work with. You go this route, and I know that you. Want to do it this way, then what I'll do is I'll come back to you at the next meeting or the one afterward, we'll have to revise our disposition policy that you just passed. Take, you know, account the new law, which requires us to do the ninety-day notice. And all the rules about, uh, uh, giving back the excess proceeds and all that stuff, so I'll, I'll amend that to say that. We would need to use a broker. That's if through this RFP process, that kind of. So if you want to kind of keep moving down this road. I don't know of anybody that's actually gone through the process yet. This RFP is mostly lifted from the one that Winthrop just did. Lifted it from the town of York. Lifted it from St. Berwick, so everybody's kind of using this thing right here, just so you know. Um, they're all kind of putting their toes in the sand, I would love to have one of these towns that has deeper pockets than us move forward first and see if they get sued. We could do it, but I'd like to get us all lined up so that we're all set to go and we're fairly confident, you know, instead of us.
We're fortunate in line to get sued.
Yes, exactly.
So we'll see that one come.
Not over the RFP, I'm pumped, we can do this part, it's just about what to do with the excess money afterwards is what I'm concerned about.
Once we, once the real estate agent has sold it for us, what we.
Yeah, what do we do with the money? Exactly, that's, that's the part I'm like.
And then, and then they have made that believe.
They have, what we don't, the biggest question is we don't know what to do with the money when we can't find the person. Who it belongs to or who it belonged to. So for example, like the ones that are down on the Wilson Pond Road that everybody wants, if we go ahead and sell that, we can do it. Just any of the money, the excess proceeds, we're gonna have to put. In escrow or something somewhere and just let it sit, because nobody knows. The legislature was completely unclear. Of what we're supposed to do with it, it's, if it's ours, it's our, it. There's no guidance on what they want us to do with this money. That doesn't. Belong to anybody, I mean, people are, are making assumptions, maybe we turn it over to, you know, the unclaimed property list at the state, I, I don't know, people don't know what to do with it, so.
That makes sense, that's, that's one of them. Well, I'd say we go ahead and we'll forward to the RFP, it's like pretty reasonable.
But, 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 then somebody could, could buy that piece of property?
Yeah, we could sell it, we just don't know what to do with the money above and beyond the amount we're allowed to keep.
But then we could, as Joe says. Turn it over to unclaimed property, the money that.
That's one idea, I mean, nobody really knows what to do with it, MMA is saying just hold on to it and make sure that you can say that this is what it is. And leave it there until we figure out what to do with it.
And let somebody else have it.
Or whether we get to keep it, you know, that's the question, the question is, is whether the town gets to keep the money that you can't find who it belongs to, because I mean, in the past, we keep it all anyway. So this law has changed that we have to return it to the previous owner, or if you don't know who the previous owner is, are we supposed to give it to the state for their process, or do we get to keep it? Uh, that's kind of the question that's out there, the different process that no one's ever done before, so we don't know.
Nobody's done this, and this treaty court was not clear.
Well, the court kind of struck down the general. Theme that we get to keep all of the excess money. It wasn't specific to main law or anything, so they. They changed the law, but we don't have any experience dealing with this in, in Maine. On how to deal with it, we would have kept all of the money, and, and up until they changed the statute.
Nobody's said to deal with this yet, no towns?
The towns are slowly moving forward, like they've done these RFP process. Reed Field has like a hundred and twenty acre parcel on the lake that they don't know who owns it, and they would love to get it back on the tax rolls, but they don't do any to do anything with it now, it's just sitting there. It's a waterfront parcel with a hundred, I think it's a hundred, it's a hundred, a hundred and twenty acres. And they, they can't find who it belongs to, that's why it's been foreclosed upon, and now they can't do anything with it, irritating to them. They would like to tax it again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we make a motion, yes?
Yes, if you would like.
When you go up to RFP, yep.
I'll make, I make a motion to, um, go ahead with the RFP for the real estate broker services.
Second. This was motion by Chris, uh, second by Kent to. Bond with the, uh, the RFP for real estate broker service. All those in favor? Thank you.
And Mark did find a, a date type always, and I must have hit enter and it put the date, I was working on it, inside the RFP, the date doesn't agree with the one in the front, I know about it, so I'll fix it for you.
Sorry, I thought of something in the public comment, can I go ahead for a second? It's cotton log and trailblazers is, uh. They're trying to put a, a lien to on the building. That town owns the property under. The clubhouse building. Uh, so it's a twelve by sixty lien to, it was on the original plans to build, the building when we got the lease for a dollar for twenty years. But, um. For now, contemplating putting it on, uh, just, just a notification to you, cause the land under it is yours, do you have any issue with it? Putting the lien to one? I just wanna. You are the landlords.
Yeah. So, it's okay.
It's okay.
It was on the original plans to do the bill, when we built the building, we just didn't have enough money to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could go over doing that. You have a permit, that's a stage of a permit.
Thank you, fully consideration.
Well, and while we're backtracking, I had, I had hidden under here, um. The little dog poop bag dispenser, next to the railroad parking lot. Was open today. And I tried to close it and you, there's, you have found this little. Key to make the thing slide up and hold it in place and I couldn't grasp it with my fingers. And I broke a nail trying to do it. Compensation. Exactly, so whoever has that little key to close that, it's closed right now, but it'll probably flop, open once the train goes by and rattles that old parking lot, so.
And did you want us to pay for a?
A manicure, no, I gave up on manicures once I became a dental hygienist, I. They don't last, we weren't allowed to have long nails as dental hygienists, so.
But we're on to, uh. Part number ten. In the Stargardt Bank sidewalk plow thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, Blue Rock Earthworks, two thousand five hundred and sixty-four. Crash trips. Chesterfield and Associates, one hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and twenty, the final payment on the dam. CMP, it's somewhere between a thousand and two thousand dollars on here. Add them, I didn't have time to add them all up, I just got this, so we got here, a lot of bills. Who's in, how is that how I say that? No, would remove, uh, grinding for the wood at the transfer station, sixteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four. EcoMaine tipping fees, two thousand one hundred and fifty-three.
Justin, can I interrupt you for a second, on the EcoMaine thing, did they ever get back to us on exactly what we had spent?
I haven't seen it yet, no, let me, uh.
Well, either that or can we just go to our accountant and say, run it on this payday?
Yeah, I can do that.
Yeah. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Want for the last year?
Yeah, or for a, a complete fiscal year, maybe, and maybe accumulate what we've done this year.
GDI Services, the Custodians, three thousand one hundred and eighteen. Hydraulic Solutions of New England. Dump Body Ram is the note, uh, two thousand nine hundred and ten. It says auto repair. Maintenance on the two thousand nineteen Ford F three fifty, two thousand one hundred and eighty-two. And Technology Group, the phone and our monthly, uh. IT support, two thousand four hundred and eighty, main waste to energy, four thousand nine hundred and six. Ringland Salt Company, five thousand five hundred and ninety-seven. Northeast Chain and Supply Bed Chains, one thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, O'Connor Chevrolet, uh, air tanks, nineteen Western Star, that must be, is that you? Oh, that's one of the plow trucks, must be, one thousand seventy-three. Royer Advisors, that's our business services, seven thousand and seventy-three. RSU number two, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-seven. State of Maine Bureau of Motor Vehicles, seven thousand one hundred and fifty-four, State of Maine IFNW, one thousand seven hundred and sixty-four. For a total of four hundred and eighty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety-three cents.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number ten for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Second.
The motion by Chris, second by Kent to approve warrant number ten for. Fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, all those in favor? Thank you. We need your name, that's.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
All in favor?